And for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. Two hundred and thirty-five, which is one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'll call the Tuesday, February 12th meeting of the Common Council order. Please call the roll.
Councillor Olson.
Here.
Councillor Bridge.
Here.
Councillor Bender.
Here.
Councillor Stenberg.
Here.
Councillor McDonald.
Here.
Councillor Martin.
Here.
Councillor Finland.
Here.
Councillor Herrick.
Here.
Councillor McKenzie.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor Nowicki.
Here.
And Councillor Cadot.
Recognizing the quorum, we'll proceed.
Item four is approval of the January 15th, 2013 regular council meeting minutes.
You've heard the motion in second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item six is a consent agenda.
You've heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item seven point one, Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting council confirmation of Environmental Services Director Steve Roberts and to extend Chris Carlson's acting engineering position until the position is brought back before the council for confirmation to appoint a candidate.
You've heard the motion in second. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item seven point two, Assistant Public Works Director Janigo is requesting to award the 2013 recycled concrete and asphalt crushing to Iron River Sand and Gravel for the amount specified in the document.
Heard the motion in multiple seconds. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item eight point one, Mayor Hagan is appointing Janet Hanson to the Business Improvement District Board of Directors and David O'Cash to the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
Heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item ten point one is a resolution introduced by the Planning Department setting a public hearing for March 19th at 6:30 to request comments of the community development needs and fair housing choice.
Heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item ten one, I'm asking to pull that. There's more information and, I'm sorry, 10.2, I'm sorry. More information coming in that the city planner or park director would like to review before we bring it back.
Item 10.3 is a resolution of the Common Council approving the form of notice to lease real property to Kestrel Aircraft Company, Inc.
Heard the motion in second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Any other business to come before this body?
Heard a motion in second to adjourn.
We stand adjourned. We'll reconvene with the committee of the whole at 20 to 7. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order.
We all recognize that a quorum is present, including all city councillors. Item one is Mayor Hagan's recommendation for the future animal shelter. This was referred from the December 18th regular council meeting. I just want to point out there's, you have two handouts at your desk tonight. A communication from Bean Preedy and an email that we earlier had distributed to you.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to hear some comments from Mayor Hagan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, I'd like to poll the recommendation of December, whatever it was, 18th, for purposes of discussion here this evening. It has been an arduous journey for the last four-plus years for individuals on the council, especially Councillor McKenzie and Director Vito. Last two years, it's been interesting since I've been here. It shouldn't be this interesting, I guess. But at any rate, what we'd like to do tonight, I'm going to ask Director Vito to do a slide presentation with regard to hopefully informing everybody the correct information with regard to the shelter, as far as the cost estimates are and operational costs because we either haven't done a very good job of it, or it hasn't been out there properly because there's all sorts of misinformation that's being carried around, delivered, and assumed with regard to the shelter. We do know for a fact that what it would take to have a city shelter, cost, operational, size, we do believe that we know what the cost for a 9,600 square foot shelter is as far as cost, operation, and construction. It's believed that the 9,600 square foot shelter would facilitate the entire county serving the animal population that is in need of those services at a shelter. And there's one constant factor and belief, not belief, but factor that we have before us, and that is, I think, everybody in this room, in this building, on this council, the administration, and I think the public prefer one shelter. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense not to. Getting there is what we want to discuss tonight. How do we, how do we bridge the gap to make the right decision, a good decision, and one that we won't regret moving down the road for other reasons that may not be known here today? But we do believe that we have sufficient information to understand and relay to the council and the public the, what it would cost and what the size of the facility may be required to have a shelter that serves all of our furry friends. I have to state personally that, and I don't have evidence in my capability to back this up, but I'm thinking that, you know, 6,300 square foot is certainly not large enough to serve the county entirely, but I'm also under the belief that 9,600 square foot may be too large. So I think we may want to look at a happy medium unless the majority of the people in council feel that, one way or the other. So what I'd like to do is, and I'd like to have us concentrate on what Jean's going to present because it is the important factor that we need to get our arms around with regard to moving forward and constructing the shelter that will serve what we believe is necessary. So I'll turn it over to Jean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I really have just one goal tonight, and that's for all of us here, when we leave the door, walk out the door, that we all have the same understanding of the finances and what it will entail to build a larger structure if that's the way that we go. So I know there, as Mayor Hagan alluded to, there are a lot of numbers that have been floating around out there, some of them very, very inaccurate. And so what I have on the PowerPoint here are some graphs and some charts and just different ways to look at really the same information. And that is, what would it cost? What is the estimated cost to build a facility? And then what is the estimated cost to operate that facility? And then when I'm done, we'll certainly open it up for any questions, or I know there's other speakers here that would like to make some comments as well. So, the first slide that I have here, again, we looked at the cost to construct a 6,300 square foot shelter, and we looked at a cost for a 9,600 square foot shelter. And where did those square feet figures come from? They came from the many meetings and hours that we put into, and many people put into in our project advisory group where our architect helped us by looking at the number of animals that were handled by the city and by the Douglas County Humane Society. How many animals would be flowing through these two different facilities? So that's where we came up with those numbers. And the first slide here again is the capital cost to build it. So we have estimates for the 6,300 square foot shelter that are just under $2.3 million. That includes everything, estimated construction costs for the building, furniture, fixtures, equipment, contingency on the construction, some professional fees for oversight while we're moving through the construction. And so that's everything that we can think of to get the building up. And then the same thing on the right side. For a larger shelter, we're estimating just over $3.1 million. So what we're doing here is we're comparing what does it cost for the difference going from just a city shelter to a community shelter? And that difference is in the red, and that is $828,000. So that's one component of where we're looking for additional assistance. The second slide that I've got here, we just picked out the year 2014. And this is an estimate, and I say estimate because we haven't yet negotiated a contract with Animal Allies to operate the facility in that year. So we're doing some estimates based on what we currently pay for our shelter. And then I had a lot of good help here. Assistant Finance Director Zahuski worked with Superior Waterlight &amp; Power to gather some utility costs. And so we've got those in the greatest detail possible. We also have an estimate for setting aside money for repair and maintenance of the shelter. And that number has decreased some from some estimates in the past. And I got some help from Assessor Brad Thine to look at all the components of the construction cost of the building and say, what to each of these, how long will each of these components of the building last? Whether it's the roof, or the HVAC, or the furniture, whatever you may have. So we went to great detail in that to determine what do we need to set aside every single year so we don't get to the position that we're in right now, where we had to borrow money? And we're kind of scrambling to come up with the cost to build and operate the shelter. So, so again, these two different pie charts here, on the left side is the smaller shelter, on the right is the larger, and here again is our gap. Now, this is a gap that is every year. This isn't just the, this is a one-time gap here, one-time gap to build it. This $59,000 is a gap that will continue each year into the future. This slide includes, I've added in the, actually, capital and debt are kind of one and the same thing here, but I've added in not only the operating costs, but the debt costs to get the building up and operating. And again, just picked out one year. And so here is what the breakdown would be if we were to allocate this based on number of animals. So you see, the city gets roughly 75% of that, and then other funding sources would need to cover the $136,000. Now, here's where we come to our issue. This is what we have had offered so far, $20,000 a year from the county, and here's our gap. For the year 2014, it's $116,000. So that's just one year, and again, that gap will continue year after year after year. The bar charts that I have here are really just different ways of looking at this. They're the same numbers that are in the, some of the pie charts, but it's just a different visual for you. This is a view of the smaller shelter. The blue is what we estimate our operating costs to be. Again, there's your $207,000, and we've just bumped that up a little bit through time. The red is our actual debt service that the city has. We have already issued this debt. We're already paying on that debt. Two years have been paid, soon to pay 2013. And don't get too worried about this year 2020. This particular debt issue is one of many debt issues that the city has. Our debt is not spiking up in the year 2020. It's just one debt issue out of a number. Our debt is actually very, very steady over the years, so I just didn't want people to get excited about that. Now, the next bar chart, this is for the larger facility, and this kind of mirrors this back here, the blue and the red and the green. Oops. The blue is city. The red is what we have contributed so far, and the green is our gap. My last slide is, Mayor Hagan had asked me to put some numbers to these charts so you can see what numbers feed into the charts, so that's what, that's what this slide is. And that is all the financial information I have. I laugh every time I look at this. I did not put this, this animal on here. I won't say who did. It's just a very strange-looking dog, but that's the point that I would open it up for questions and comments.
One?
Yes. Jean, I just have a question. When, when will this PowerPoint presentation be available, like on the city website, or? I know, I would like to have a study in depth.
We could have it on there tomorrow.
Perfect. Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Olson?
Jean, very nice presentation.
Thank you.
We had, and the mayor alluded to, the possibility of a different-size structure. Do we want to get into that now, or how do you?
Well, it's, if you give us direction, us, meaning administration, to go back and talk to our architects who, who came up with the different square feet, and tell them that we've been given another directive to try to decrease this size, we can, we can certainly do that. We've, when we started, Mick will remember this, I think we estimated close to an 11,000 square foot facility. And then we did some changes to that, got down to pretty much around this area, 9,600. I, we could certainly go back and ask them for additional assistance with that, but I think we want to make sure that if we are having one community shelter, that it isn't too small and that the animals are cramped in there or anything, but we can, we can do that.
Any other questions? Councillor McKenzie?
I think Tom was first.
Okay. Councillor Bridge?
What reason do we have to believe at this point that anybody will get involved besides us? Because, I mean, if, if we have some reason to believe that the county might get on board and, you know, cover an appropriate cost towards a countywide shelter, then, you know, then there really isn't much we can do here right now. And if we don't, you know, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, if we have some reason to think that they might, and I, and I think they should, I talked to a county board supervisor at last week's Superior Days meeting, I think that was Wednesday night, and he had no clue about this issue, knew absolutely nothing about it. And so I'm a little bit astounded at the fact that, that the line we're getting from the county and the towns is that they're not willing to contribute what it would take to cover their costs in a countywide animal shelter. Yet, I have to believe that there are quite a number of county board supervisors that know nothing about the issue.
I, I think that's an excellent point, and because there has been so much confusion on the numbers, I think perhaps people couldn't judge correctly how much they could contribute if they're working with inaccurate numbers. So I don't know that anybody, other than people I've been working with internally on this, as we've gathered since, since the December 18th council meeting, we were given the directives to go ahead and more specifically cost this out, and so we did. And I think we did a better job of really nailing it down by looking at not, not utility estimates from a Duluth facility, but utility estimates based on our utility costs here, and some more fine-tuning to exactly what you need for a repair and maintenance fund. And so I don't think anybody had really good information. I think it was generally known that $20,000 wasn't going to come close, but I think tonight is the first night that we're all sitting around and looking at the same numbers, so I don't want to.
Well, just to take it a step further, I mean, you and I have spoken, and I've looked at the number of residential properties that are paying taxes in the county as opposed to the city, and it wouldn't be that much per household to, to fund this. You know, maybe somewhere in the range of about $10 a household annually to, to fund this. Now, I, you know, the particulars of how you would break that up, if we already have the money set aside and we're going to, you know, think the county might do something in terms of an assessment, which, you know, I don't think they can take the, the city taxpayers out of that, so, you know, that'd be a lot of changes. But, I mean, if we have some reason to believe that, that something could change here, then, you know, we should hang on to this until after the next county board meeting. But, you know, how long do we go? I mean, this has been a long time already, too, and we're kind of faced with, we got to make a decision whether or not we do something, too, so.
Councillor McKenzie?
Yeah, I, I know what Tom's talking about, and there are, there are some people that, from the county board, that probably aren't in the know, for whatever reason that might be. But there are quite a few that, that are in the know, and they care. One of those people here tonight, Dan Corbin, I've talked with Dan Corbin at length. He's been to many of our meetings, as have some of the other people from, even from some of the towns and the villages. But, yeah, some people aren't going to be in the know. Not everybody is, has, you know, gotten all this information, but I think some of the people that, I think that really have a lot of say-so, as far as the finances are concerned, are looking into this deeper than some people might think. My question, Jean, going back to the cost analysis, smaller, bigger, smaller building versus the bigger building, and I know, you know, we talk about going back to, to the, you know, the architects or the analysts about this. Can we get a, a pretty close figure, though, by, by doing the math, you know, figuring out, you know, what we, what they've given us for 6,300 square foot, what they've given us for 9,600, you know, and, and figure that out per square foot, or, and we can get, we can get an idea whether it's an 8,500 square foot building, or whatever we, whatever we come up with?
Yeah. I mean, I can do quick, simple math and, and come down to a percentage of the $3.1 million. What I can't do is guarantee that all those animals will appropriately fit in there. And the, what I didn't want to do, and because the 8,500 square foot facility has kind of been tossed around a little bit, the last thing I wanted to do was start guessing on the numbers. So, yeah, I, I can certainly come up with what I think would be a ballpark, but, you know, it's, quite frankly, I don't think it's going to move this a whole lot. I think it will, you know, might take this down a few hundred thousand, the $800,000 shortfall in capital, maybe? And it might take this $59,000 shortfall for operating costs, maybe, again, I'm just kind of pulling numbers out of the air, maybe we knock off 5,000 of that from less utilities, but it'll move somewhat if, if you can service that many animals in that size of a facility.
And I think that's important to the county at this point. I mean, that's, I think, Dan probably has some, some of those questions tonight, and... make a decision whether or not we do something, too, so...
Counsel McKenzie?
Yeah, I know what Tom's talking about, and there are some people that, from the county board, that probably aren't in the know, for whatever reason that might be, but there are quite a few that are in the know, and they care. One of those people here tonight, Dan Corbin, I've talked with Dan Corbin at length, he's been to many of our meetings, as have some of the other people from, even from some of the towns and the villages. But, yeah, some people aren't going to be in the know, not everybody is, has, you know, gotten all this information, but I think some of the people that, I think that really have a lot of say-so, as far as the finances are concerned, are looking into this deeper than some people might think. My question, Jean, going back to the cost analysis, smaller, bigger, smaller building versus the bigger building, and I know, you know, we talk about going back to the, you know, the architects or the analysts about this, can't we get a pretty close figure, though, by doing the math, you know, figuring out, you know, what they've given us for 6,300 square foot, what they've given us for 9,600, you know, and figure that out per square foot, or, and we can get, we can get an idea, whether it's an 8,500-square-foot building, or whatever we come up with?
Yeah, I mean, I can do quick, simple math, and come down to a percentage of the $3.1 million. What I can't do is guarantee that all those animals will appropriately fit in there. And what I didn't want to do, and because the 8,500-square-foot facility has kind of been tossed around a little bit, the last thing I wanted to do was start guessing on the numbers. So...
Right, right.
Yeah, I can certainly come up with what I think would be a ballpark, but, you know, it's, quite frankly, I don't think it's going to move this a whole lot. I think it will, you know, might take this down a few hundred thousand, the $800,000 shortfall in capital, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
And it might take this $59,000 shortfall for operating costs, maybe, again, I'm just kind of pulling numbers out of the air, maybe we knock off 5,000 of that from less utilities, but it'll move somewhat if you can service that many animals in that size of a facility.
Yeah, and I think that's important to the county at this point. I mean, that's, I think, Dan probably has some of those questions tonight, and that would really help clear up any, you know, I think maybe negative thoughts about what this might happen if the county comes on board. I personally think it's all positive, but it would be nice to know those figures, for that, you know, that middle-of-the-ground building.
Okay, any other questions? Counsel Bender?
Well, remember, I did get a D- in advanced algebra, but using a calculator on my phone, and that's the truth, using calculator on my phone and also about advanced algebra. But I just took a happy medium, Jean, for your benefit, between the 365 per square foot for the smaller facility, 325 for the larger facility, and made it, came up with 345, so it would cost approximately $2.9 million for an 8,500-square-foot. Just thought I would throw that out.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Counsel Finsler?
Yeah, understanding from the comments that I've read by the mayor, that the county is not under an obligation to provide any sort of animal shelter. And my question, then, is, what about the rural townships or villages? Are they under any financial obligation to provide for these animals? And if they are, why is not it the same kind of mandate that we have applied to them? I would think that the towns of, the townships, anywhere in the rural area, if we just expect the county to provide funding for this, two-thirds of that money will, again, come from the citizens of Superior. But if the obligation is the rural townships and the villages out away from the city that have an obligation to provide for their animals, or their strays, or their whatever, why are we not applying directly to them to provide funding, rather than the county?
I think you're getting to the heart of why this has taken a while, especially lately. I'm gonna guess here, but I want to say, initial discussions with townships was probably a year ago, and you're correct, the county itself does not have a statutory obligation as the city does. The city has to hold stray animals for seven days. The county has no obligation like that. I honestly don't know what the statutes are for villages and towns, but I think they do have some statutory obligation for animal care. So, when we first started approaching the townships, we initially, Animal Allies was going to do that, and then it kind of came back where Frog and Jason? I can't remember, but then some city staff were going to do that. And what we found was that there was quite a varying degree of receptiveness from the different townships and villages as to participation levels, and they all have different budgets, they all have different pressures, and we didn't, there was not a uniform response from all of them. So then, what do we do? Do we work out contracts with Town of Wascott, Villages Superior, and not with others? So then, the next thought was, well, let's go back to the county. We had many, many discussions with the county, and we said, is not another option that the county does a levy for this. So, you've hit the nail on the head as to why some of this, part of some of this has taken quite a bit of time.
But if we keep insisting that the county participate in this, aren't we just insisting that two-thirds of that burden will be borne again by the city, rather than by those townships that really have the problem? It isn't the county's obligation, it is their obligation. Shouldn't there be some sort of enforcement effort made by perhaps a state attorney general, or someone to say, "You must do this if you want to put animals in the city's facility"?
That's a question I can't answer, but it is absolutely true, what you're saying. The city taxpayers, the value of city is now just above 50% of the county, but you're absolutely right, that if the county levy is something, we get half of that, in addition to the cost that we're putting in.
Any other questions? Counsel Olson?
Comment for Mayor Hagan, please. In your recommendation, Mayor, would you be okay with reading what the recommendations are, moving forward?
I'm sorry, what my recommendation is?
Yes, on page three.
I'm suggesting we hold the recommendation that I delivered to you back in December, and with the information that Jean has presented here tonight, I would like for everybody to be able to absorb this and know that these are the facts as we know them, and if, in fact, there's a, an interest in a shelter that is other than what the city has bonded for, then we need to concentrate on the gap. Counselor Finsland and Counselor Bridges' questions were right on target, I mean, absolutely on target. And, but I'm an optimist, I think most of us are, and I did some calculations myself, when I earlier said that I struggle with a 9,600-square-foot building without technically knowing. I did some calculations on an 8,500-square-foot building, and how did I get to 8,500 square feet? Because you're gonna laugh at this, but with 900 animals occupying on an annualized basis a 6,300-square-foot building, it comes to seven square foot per animal, and that's where you laugh. And to accommodate a 1,200 stray animals in a course of year, it's between 8,300 and 8,500 square feet. So then, what I did is extrapolate what the cost would be for an 8,500-square-foot building, and with a 15% contingency, it's $640,000 gap versus an $828,000 gap. Now, turning to the optimism side, I know that the Humane Society is very excited about participating, partnering, and so forth, and I know that they have money that they would perhaps, I believe, would contribute to the gap, if you will. And I also believe that there's a number of businesses, industries in town, that perhaps may take leadership roles in the capital campaign. And with that, I don't believe that the 400, if it were an 8,500-square-foot building, or the 9,600-square-foot building, I feel fairly optimistic that with enough knowledgeable, sincere, dedicated people, as well as a professional fundraiser, that gap, whether it's the $460,000 gap, or the $828,000 gap, I believe we can accomplish that. It won't be overnight, it won't be a month from now, but I think that can be accomplished. Then, if that is true, and that is so, then the other gap has to be dealt with in another fashion. The, what was it, a $60,000 gap for the annual operational costs? Somebody's got to pony up for that, and that's a separate, two distinct discussions. So, rather than rush to the occasion, I know we've been in this four years, I would recommend that we take a very hard look at the gap, get our heads together with the folks here, and figure out a methodology to try to achieve that, without further taxing the taxpayers of Superior.
Go ahead.
And then, if I could just add to that, because it's here, what the city has done for you folks sitting out here, we need to make sure what site, for sure, that we're looking at, because that's been an issue. Mick will attest to it, and so will Jean, where's Jean? Anyway, that there's been like six or seven different sites over this period of time that were a good idea in the beginning, and then fell short of being a good idea. In some of these things, it's looking at finalizing designs, and we're looking at the city to bring these to some of our committees, Finance and Public Works, enter into negotiations so we know exactly what Animal Allies would be offering the city, get the complete costs, and then if we're gonna be entering into dialogue, it needs to be with the towns and villages as well, so that we can get these numbers, these pie charts that are as confusing for me as any one of you folks, especially this stuff. But we do have to get to a point, I believe, that we got to set a date, somewhat of a date. Construction costs are gonna be very minimal this year going up, I know that, I'm in the construction business, but if we wait going into next fall and next spring, if we can't get any resolve, we may be jeopardizing animal safety, once the Humane Society, if they are, in fact, closing at the end of April, where are we gonna bring those animals at that point in time? And with the economy, believe it or not, it is on the upswing, and right now is the time to be bidding these projects out. So we need to be cognizant of that, that we need to move, get to a point. But with all that being said, I would like to make a motion to hold this in committee, in committee, until we get more information on a possible different site, and try and make sure that we can make these arrangements with everybody involved.
Second.
Go ahead, Mick.
Well, I agree with that. I was hoping that Dan Corbin was gonna be able to address the council?
Yeah, Mick, he has signed up to talk, so as soon as he gets through, there's a couple other people ahead of him, then we'll have him come on.
Okay, but if we, but if we make this motion now, can we still, can they still talk?
Second.
Okay, all right.
Okay, there's a motion, and there was a second, all the committee, but we'll hold off on the vote until everybody else has spoken. Thank you, Jean, thank you, Mayor. I believe next, we're gonna talk about the layout Jeff. Do you have any information on that? Are you ready for that, or?
That's not an issue. Oh, wow, this is what it is. Okay.
Okay, never mind. Okay, so our first person we would like to come up is Bob McKellen.
Hi, Bob McKellen, I'm the owner of Superior Animal Hospital and Boarding Suites, and I've been involved with the current shelter and its state for the past 20 years, as well as all of the Humane Societies that have been involved, and I've been on the advisory committee for this new shelter, and, you know, kind of been through it, through thick and thin here, along with Jean, and, you know, I didn't have all this information when I was kind of preparing my thoughts here a little bit, what I was gonna talk about, but I'll still present some of my ideas and kind of where I'm coming from on this, and I think it's a couple things. It's really key to have a well-rounded Humane Society organization operating this shelter. The smaller shelter, Animal Allies has stated, I mean, whether it might be off the record, they're not gonna run a city shelter that's not a combined shelter, and I don't want to speak for them totally, but that's sort of my thoughts. And we can't just have anybody come in and run the shelter. It won't work. It didn't work very well when our friend, the shelter, and effective organization is really important to run the shelter. And, and some of the reasons for that is, for instance, if you compare the Humane Society right now, they do an awesome job of fundraising for their little shelter. They raise about $100,000 a year through adoptions, donations, fundraising, memberships. That's how they take care of all the county animals right now. You know, there isn't money, I mean, there's a smidgen of money that comes from the county, and we're not taught, we haven't talked at all about in these discussions, about, you know, what funds might be generated by the humane organizations that is there. There's a lot of these funding gaps and that. I mean, how much are we gonna ask, and might we ask, or might the Humane Society that's operating in there be able to fill some of these gaps? It's a big question. I mean, everybody wants to be conservative on how this thing's gonna run, but a smaller shelter is not gonna do it. The smaller shelter is not gonna have the community's support. It might look good on paper, because it's a lot less money, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna work. And I know we talked a lot about the size of the shelter here, and, you know, we're throwing around numbers, but you gotta look at the floor plan. The floor plan's gotta work. There's a lot of, there's non-animal space in this floor plan as well. You've got, you know, reception, you've got a community room, you've got a place to park the humane officer's vehicle, so you can transfer animals in and out. Some of those things gotta fit in, no matter what size the shelter is. I mean, it doesn't, they don't necessarily get bigger with the bigger shelter. So I think, I'd be a little bit hesitant to throw around numbers too much and change just based on, it's gonna cost this much less and a percentage less. That's dangerous. You know, I've built a 10,000-square-foot animal, or veterinary clinic, and there's a lot of work that went into the original plans that were bigger than the 9,600 square feet. You just can't start throwing the numbers around too much here. Trying to think, I've had a couple other comments here. You know, I think the opportunities for the larger shelter are awesome. I think this is gonna be a great asset for the community, which includes the city and the county. I just think whether we can get the county on board 100% or not, those animals are still gonna end up coming to the shelter, and certainly, in the most recent proposed site for the shelter, it's right next to the Humane Society Building. It's sort of, you know, two miles away. If they close, all the animals are gonna be coming in there anyway, and I know that doesn't answer a lot of the dollar questions, you know, I appreciate the numbers that Jean has presented here. I just think we have a chance for community support, and we have a chance for more funds coming in to support this thing, you know, if it's all-inclusive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay. Next is Dan Corbin.
I'm Dan Corbin, I'm chairman of the Administration Committee for Douglas County. I'm also town, on one of the town boards. And I want to say right out front, after some convincing, I'm in favor of one facility for the whole county, have been for quite a while. But here's where I'm having some issues. She just stated here, and Mr. Bender came up with these numbers for square foot, and this is where some of the towns are having trouble along with the county, even though the county doesn't have a stake in the game, they're willing to help out. But doesn't that $325 a square foot alarm anybody? And the reason I'm asking that question is this, the Town of Hawthorne built a, I believe it's a 7,000-square-foot facility for $450,000. The Town of Oakland is voting this week to build a 10,000-square-foot facility for a million dollars. There's something wrong with this square foot number, and I can't get my handle on it, and in order for us to understand what's going on in this whole process, I need to find out why it is $324,000, or $324 a square foot, which is what this number comes out to be. That's my first question. What's in that building that makes it so darn expensive? If we can figure that out, the numbers, I think, will fall in place. You keep talking about the county taxing. We have two ways to do this. When this building was built right here, the Superior, City Superior has a loan or an agreement with the county, and it comes off the tax dollars. We could do that, but like you said before, half of that's gonna be borne by the city residents of the city Superior. We don't really want to do that, either. We can use our capital projects, and possibly, I just talked to the finance director the other day, and it's possible that we might be able to come up with some things in how we can do this. But we also want to, as, and I don't remember his name here, from the vet... But we also wanna, as, and I don't remember his name here, from the vet, Dr. Bob, one of our big things is fundraising. Most of the towns, and by the way, we did send a letter out to all the towns, the towns association did contact every town and village, we have about five or six that are, said no, they're way out, they don't, they don't even use the facility for Douglas County Humane Society at this point, because it's so far away. We have about four of them that said, including my township, said, let's wait and see what the options are gonna be before we make up our mind whether we're gonna do or don't. So we have all these things coming in, but when you start thinking about this facility, Animal Allies has a facility in Duluth that's totally funded by what? Not one tax dollar. All we're asking here is that, isn't there some more funding that we can do that we can see ahead of time, so that we know what's going on here, and who's at stake, and who the players are, other than our taxpaying citizens? Somebody else has gotta put some money in this thing. And after I talked to the mayor here three weeks ago, he listed some numbers, and came up, we, just between the two of us, came up with probably around $750,000, which took the county into, at least for the building capital cost of it, somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. We can live with that, probably. But we need to know what's in that facility in order for me to sell this, sell is not the word that I wanna use, but convince the people in the administration committee to push this onto the county board floor to get a vote. Our intentions are, on March 7th, to have a discussion on the, on the administration committee meeting, and hopefully push it on to the county board floor, I think we looked up, it was the 21st, I believe, so that we can get a vote and see where people are, see what we wanna do. We definitely don't wanna tax our taxpayers any more than we need to. Douglas County already this coming year, our taxpayers are gonna get hit about $6.1 million in, when we paid off our Wisconsin retirement system thing that we had. So they're gonna get hit with that already. We don't wanna hit our taxpayers again with this, because obviously, like I said before, the city's gonna get hit twice. So we wanna figure out another way to do this, and the more people that are involved at the fundraising part of this, where the numbers can show, will make a huge difference. For my meeting on the 7th, I wanna know what's in that building and why it is so darn expensive. To me, you're looking at about $100 a square foot for the town of Oakland, if they approve that facility, and here we're looking at $325,000, yeah, $325, and it's a 9,600 square foot facility. Why is those two numbers so far apart? If we can figure that out, and I'm willing to sit down with anybody, any of the people in the office there that, that came up with these numbers, or the architects, explain why this building is so darn expensive. And I need to know that for March 7th, so that we can figure out what the county's gonna do, because we do wanna do something. We have people calling all the time. I've taken probably 12 phone calls since this meeting was announced. Different people that have been involved in, in the Humane Society for Douglas County are concerned about the whole thing, and now they know what my concerns are. So that's kinda where we're at. I believe that we wanna do something, and we wanna do it together so we can make this work, but we need some information on these numbers.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Olson.
Dan, a couple questions for you. First of all, is the March 7th meeting open to the public?
Yes, it's our administration meeting. It's definitely open to the public.
The other two buildings that you speak of, what is the purpose of those buildings?
They're town halls and garages.
Okay.
Now, I, one of the comments that was made to me is that we have different things, different requirements in their building, and I understand that, but it still shouldn't be that much of a difference.
Okay, but are they occupied 24 hours a day with human beings and animals?
No.
That may be your difference right there.
No.
Just food for thought.
Then, let's see it. That's what I wanna know.
Councilor McKenzie?
Yeah, Dan, you know, you and I have had conversations before, and this has come up, and I, I understand your concern there. You know, there is specialized equipment. I know Animal Allies in Duluth, I know, I've been through that building quite a bit, I've been in their attic, and I've seen their specialized equipment, and there is, there is a lot. Should it be, you know, so high, these estimates that we're getting right now, in this day and age? Probably not, I agree with you there. I still say that we got these projected costs from architects and whatever, but I think the proof in the pudding is gonna come when we get bids. You know, the more bids, the better. I think public works will, will agree that the more bids, the better, and, you know, you do, you take the lowest qualified bidder, doesn't mean you have to take the lowest bidder, but I think those numbers are gonna change. And so, and maybe Dan can talk to this a little bit more about, about the construction costs and the bidding process, but I still think that, you know, I'm concerned too with those high prices, but I don't think that it's gonna, at the end of the day, that that's what's gonna happen. It's not, these things are not etched in stone, so.
Well, we just talked a little bit ago about the timing is right right now for, for putting this job out to bid. If you remember when we built out this facility here on the other side, I believe they told us that it was gonna cost us somewhere around $650,000 to build that, and by the time it came to bid, it was a third less, or at least 150,000 less. I don't have the total numbers in front of me. I know that can happen. But all of these new buildings that we have, that these towns have already built, they also have to go with these ventilation systems that are there now, and, I mean, they're probably not as sophisticated, because you got all kinds of things, cat here, and dog here, and whatever else you got, and I understand that. It just, I would, if that's the case, then that's what I wanna see, so we can explain that to people, because that's the part that we're stumbling on really bad.
And the, to answer your question about the fundraising, that sort of thing, capital campaign, what a lot of people are concerned with, and there are people out there that are looking to donate to this thing, but what they want, like all of us want, is this one shelter, and that's what they're waiting to hear. They wanna know that this is gonna happen, it's gonna be one shelter, and if that's, if that's something that we can confirm for them, they wanna be on board, and, you know, it'll be a significant amount of money. And so, I think if everybody is gonna cooperate and in agreement, I see big things coming from the capital campaign and towards this, towards this project, so that we can alleviate what you're talking about, cost to the taxpayers.
My question would be, is that gonna be enough money to help with the operating costs? I don't know where I'm gonna come up with that. Seventy, $70,000 a year is the number that I was told. I don't know if the county can come up with an additional $70,000 every year, I don't, I just don't know. You know, when we operate off, out of our, out of our capital projects, I just got informed this year that our capital projects probably won't be very big, because of the blowdown storm that we had here last summer. Those funds are all put in a fund to, it was like 700 and some thousand dollars, they're put in a fund to fund the forestry, because we know that there's gonna be a downfall. Normally, last year, I think it was about a million and a half we had, if that's the case, and that keeps happening, then funding this is not gonna be a problem. But when we looked at it the other day, this year, it ain't gonna happen. So, we have some things we can do, but it's like the chicken and the egg. Funding, commitment. You know, you want a commitment from the county, that's great, but we also wanna know who else has a stake in it, because we don't need to hit the taxpayer any more than what we already have. And I guess that's what we're trying to do here.
Councilor Brown?
Yeah, Dan, does the county have a license for animals? Would that be something you might consider?
A license for animals?
Yeah, you know, for cats and dogs?
Absolutely. That's part of the money that they, that this group gets every year. The county has license fees for dogs. We set them, the towns can raise them, there's a minimum, but all that money is collected through the city, or the county clerk's office, it's put into a reserve fund, and I don't know if they pay it once a year or twice a year, once a year, but then that money comes back. It's somewhere around $7,000, I think, for that.
Or maybe a little over $2,000.
$2,000? Excuse me, $2,000.
Does that include cats?
No, just dogs. But that's one of the other things that we've been looking at with the townships, we're trying to work with them to get them to license their animals. I've had this discussion with Mr. Zakowski's wife, she's our town clerk, and how do you get people to say, okay, we need you to license your animals, so that we don't have to hit the taxpayers so hard? Because I don't know how many dogs are in this county, but there's a lot. And the fund, and I don't know how much the fees are, because I don't even remember what they are in my township, but they would add a lot to the operating costs if we could do it that way. And still, to this day, those fees are still collected, some towns do a really good job of it, some towns don't do it at all. And if, what we tried to do is through Sue Sandvik, and we had, we had been at the town meetings, and we tried to go to the towns association meetings to get these towns and their officials to push this. At the town summit, we send a license thing out in the tax statement, and that's how a lot of it comes back. But I bet it's not even 10%. So there's a lot of possibility of licensing, because it is required by law that you license your dogs, not cats, but dogs. And if we were to go and look at that, I would say there would be a heck of a generator there, and the city licenses is their own, I believe. And so, if the county did, or the rural areas did some of that, it would really help out a lot when it comes to some of these operating costs.
You know, and I don't think the city does any better job of collecting on dog or, and I think the city has a license for cats, but I'm not sure. No? Okay, well, it should have.
But it is, it is a good source of revenue, though. If you can get people to do it, and some people will look at it as a tax, but it is a way to reduce what the costs are if they license their animal.
Well, we should just look at a way of being more aggressive in licensing of animals, and I would suggest it, and maybe I'll bring up something about licensing of cats.
One of the things we did look at in the towns association is what other counties did different on licensing animals. Some of them make it very strict, through the townships. There's one county, I believe it's in Wausau, around Wausau, I can't remember the name of township, but they have a 60, they figure a 60% licensing rate. Now, we've looked at that to see what we do different than they do, and it's enforcement. And that's all it is. And they, they actually go out, and if they see a dog, and without a tag on it, they make sure there's a tag gotten on that dog, before the owner gets it back. The other thing that our county has done now is, I believe, Dr. Bob can attest to this, we license now through the facilities in Douglas County. We'll give them the licenses, and then they send the license to the county clerk. And I believe they're all, have the capability to do it, and I don't know how many do it, but we did that so that we had more outlets, like where the dogs are being spayed or neutered or whatever, and then they get a license at that time. And then that money goes back to the county, and then it's shipped off to, once a year, to the Humane Society. So some of that's done already.
We just gotta be more aggressive.
Yeah.
Councilor Bender?
Yes, Dan, a couple of quick comments. First of all, I wanna thank you for appearing tonight and speaking, also Dr. Bob, too. And I know one thing you and I spoke about on the phone yesterday was, I think we here, and people in general, would like to see a mock-up, an architect's mock-up, of what the facility's gonna look like, whether it's 6,300 or 9,600 square feet. And, and I just thought I would bring that up, in case you hadn't mentioned it, and you hadn't as of yet.
And I have to agree, too, that to reduce the size of the facility probably isn't gonna work. I mean, it was sized it that way because of the populations that they use now, and that's probably what should be used in the future, just to make sure that you have enough room. You don't wanna get in a situation where you have to add on to this building, or have a hard time paying for it the way it is.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next is Jean Koski.
My name is Jean Kiaske, I'm with the Humane Society of Douglas County, I'm the Board of Directors and Service Secretary. And you have already brought up so many fantastic points, and it makes me feel so good to know that you're talking about them. You're right, absolutely right, there's so much misinformation out there, and I've been hearing it as I've been sitting there. But the starting point is getting things out there and talking about them, and it's been gratifying to see that already happening.
Jean, Jean, could you talk into the microphone?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay. And I would like to thank the mayor and the council members for allowing this discussion to go on. And thank you so much, Dan, for coming tonight and speaking, because I think you've given a wealth of information to all of us here. One of the misinformations that I wanna discuss is the fact that we are not dissolving or quitting or ending the shelter as of April 1st, I'm not sure where that came from. We will dissolve the Humane Society of Douglas County when we can move into that new facility, not before, but we want so much to be part of that, and for a number of reasons, and many of them you've already heard. I wanna thank Mr. Bridge in bringing up the point that, you're absolutely right, and I found this out myself in making some phone calls, there are a lot of people in the townships and in the county that don't have any idea what's going on, and I, I don't know how we can make that better, other than to just keep talking and going out to some of these meetings, and I know that our board members will be attending these as they come up, hopefully just being there to maybe answer some questions and get some of this misinformation taken care of. But I also found the same thing, lots of people don't know, and unfortunately, lots of people can get the same information and read it, and everybody interprets differently, and we all know that. So we just need to maybe have more meetings, and more of us be at them, to be able to answer more questions, and just inform everyone. We believe the support is out there, we just have to keep getting the information out, informing the people. I think for sure, the location, what the shelter's going to look like, I've heard it referred to currently as a Taj Mahal, and that was from someone that didn't have any idea about the building at all. And I think maybe part of that came from the words "state-of-the-art facility." We don't need a state-of-the-art facility, we need a facility that's going to serve the animals properly. We don't need lots of bells and whistles, but there are things that we do need. We do need a proper-sized facility. What size that actually is, you have to ask those that have been involved. But like has already been said, we don't wanna underbuild it, but we don't need to make a Taj Mahal either. So let's make sure that we're dealing with the proper size, and what's needed versus maybe what is wished for that isn't absolutely needed, and maybe that will help. The Humane Society was recently fortunate enough to be a recipient of $110,000 in a will. That just doesn't happen, not to us, and from what I understand from the attorney, not to many. This could be something that was meant to be, maybe to help us contribute to this, where we can be part of it. We work our tails off for the animals, and have been fortunate to be able to raise enough money to keep us going every year, because we haven't had the support that really would be needed from the counties, but we've made it work. And if you, animal people are people that things, do things from the heart, and if they know there's a need, and they will come, they will be there to help. If what is needed is proper, not over the top, and it's truly gonna be there to help the animals. We could probably, as a shelter, right now, if we don't have to keep going on year after year, be able to contribute with that money that Bill gave us, and the money that we have raised, and been kind of sitting on, hoping that we'll be part of this new facility, with the intention of giving it towards a new facility, we see no reason why we couldn't give $150,000 to that new facility. If we continue to raise money like we have, maybe it could even be more, but it- If we continue to raise money like we have, maybe it could even be more, but at least look at that, $150,000, that's a lot of money, definitely a lot of money to us. In regard to the dog licensing, again, a little bit of misinformation there. According to Sue Sandvik, and I believe that was last year, only 9% of this county licenses their dogs. That's sad, and very, very low in comparison to many, many other counties around us. That could definitely be brought up. The licensing is such a minimal fee, and it does vary from township to township, because there's a state minimum, and then they can add to that. Right off the top of my head, I don't think there is a license, a dog license, that is over $15,000, with the majority of them being anywhere from $3,000 to $7,500. You get a deduction if your animal is spayed or neutered. Yay, we need to have those animals spayed and neutered. We do have, from the county, $2,000 to work with that we have to use this year in order to get the information out to the public on that dog licensing, and we will be doing that. Kind of, we're waiting kind of to see how things are going here, but we can't wait any longer, we need to get going on that. We need the people to know they need to license their dogs, and by licensing their dogs, it will in turn help their local animal shelter. We've been trying to get the word out on that, but obviously, again, it hasn't been enough, because there's still so many people that don't know. Within the last year, we were able to start licensing animals, the dogs, out of our facility. Because we adopt animals out to more than just Douglas County, I mean, we do a lot of animal adoptions, not only to the Duluth area, Minnesota area, outside of Douglas County, period. So we can't license them unless we're adopting to someone that's adopting and staying within Douglas County. But at least that's a step in the right direction, we are able to do it now. The one thing is that that dog needs to have a current rabies vaccination before it can be licensed. So in some cases, that may be holding some people back. You have to get your dog to have a current rabies license, that proof of rabies vaccination has to be given at the time of licensing the dog. But again, these are all things to make the public aware of, and hopefully, with us getting on that now, we'll make more people informed, and more people will start doing it. I know myself, for years, the fact that I had to come to the government center here and try to find a parking spot, and then go up to wherever and get the license, it's an extra thing on your to-do list. If it came, and I do it, but if it came in your tax statement, boy, that would make it so much easier. But we'll be looking at some things that maybe would help get that going. So I like the idea about the cat license. I know that there was a place in Canada that we were informed of a year or two ago that licenses both cats and dogs, and they have a phenomenal program, and it raises a lot of money. So something to think about. Just in closing, thank you for your patience, for please, you know, for continuing to give us that hope. Just please don't make the mistake of leaving the Douglas County Humane Society out. Thank you.
Any questions, Councilor Brown?
Yeah, what percentage of your animals are cats? I know it's high.
It is high. It's the vast majority, there's no doubt about that. Right off the top of my head, in 2012, I want to say we dealt with something like 75 to 80 dogs and about 160-plus cats. Big difference.
Yes, and cats have to be vaccinated the same as dogs, and, you know, for...
They do, it's just they don't have a license requirement with the county or the state, so, you know, but they still, yes, they still need to be vaccinated.
Thank you. Just a question for Dr. Bob. Dr. Bob, do you think that animal hospitals would also be a facility for selling license for dogs and in the future cats, if we can ever get that done?
Yeah, I'm not sure. There's like 25 cents for each one done, and the problem that veterinary clinics have is that people leave there with a bill that's pretty big, and veterinarians don't want to make it a little bit bigger, because it looks like then the clients are going to say, "I spent, you know, this much," and some of it's actually a tax or a license fee, or whatever you want to call it, and it's sort of like, veterinarians are reluctant to do that unless there was something more into it, in it for them, because it just makes the bill bigger. It's a little bit different situation than where the Humane Society, so, but that's a subject for discussion probably another time.
Jeff?
I just wanted to go back to the issue that we had with Mr. Corbin about the cost for the building, the estimated cost, and Councilor McKenzie made some good comments, wanted to build on that about, first of all, the number of bids. Absolutely, we think the more bidders, the better, the more competitive it is, we'll get a better price on our eventual building. But part of the reason the building costs as much as it didn't, some other people touched on it, I mean, the finishes inside the building are not something you would see in a normal office environment or a town hall-type building, probably they're made to stand the test of time, and you have your customers urinating on your floor every day and other things like that, and it's a little, it's a little bit harsher environment than your everyday, you know, commercial office kind of space. So it does drive the cost up. One thing we did do, though, per the council's direction, I think from December's meeting probably, was to try to truth-check the cost estimate we had for our architect with a local contractor. And so we had them, the architect ship all the building plans we had at the time, at least for one of the sizes of buildings, and give them the bid items and things that they saw as applicable to the building, and we had a local contractor go through those plans and those bid items and put a number to it, or check and see what he thought at least would be reasonable. And it came in, he thought this cost might even be a little bit on the low side, is what his comment was, so to put a local bent on it as far as the labor costs and the material costs of what he would normally see in building projects here in Superior, it seemed to check out. So it is preliminary at this point, but that's the number we have to work with, and it did seem to check out locally. So I just wanted to throw that in, so people know where we're at.
All right, thank you. Councilors, any other questions? Councilor McDonald?
I had a question for the Humane Society. How much does it cost to run that a year?
We have $110,000.
And you come up with those funds every year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you, Jean. Thank you for your words. Okay, at this time, we have a...
Motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to hold this in committee. So with that, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion, do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Adjourned.